This is the budget work session of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held April 27, 2021 at 5:30 PM at the Cottonwood Community Clubhouse. Ms. Jimenez, please take the role.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember House is absent. Councilmember Kurot?
Here.
Councilmember Narin?
Here.
Councilmember Wildin is absent. By, um, Councilmember Matthews, sorry.
Here.
Mayor.
Also here. Thank you. Okay, just one item this evening is review of the budgeted revenues and expenses for the city's 2021 to 2022 fiscal year budget.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kirsten Lynn, the Financial Services Director, and tonight we're going to talk about the upcoming fiscal year 2022 budget. I wish I'd have made the letters black on this slide. Too late now. This is kind of the overview of the schedule of the budget. We usually start in the November, October, November timeframe, and we work our way through, and we end up with a finished final budget that is adopted in July, and then we submit it to GFOA in September, and then we start all over again. So I wanted to talk about, we have been working on having a few more presentations for citizens to get involved in the budget process. And two of the things that we're doing in May, one is we're doing a town hall on May 25th, and that is on the calendar on the city website. And we will be doing a public service announcement, and hopefully somebody will come and ask us questions about the budget. We are also doing Inside Cottonwood on May 11th, and then Rudy is working, Rudy, the deputy city manager, is working on doing some local organizations and presenting to them. So we're just going to dive right into budget. So every year we have to look at where our sales tax ended for previous years and what we estimate our sales tax is going to be like for the upcoming year. And I usually look at taxable sales when I calculate what the sales tax is going to be. And as you can see in this graph, our taxable sales have been steadily increasing over the last several years. And for fiscal year 2021, that's the year we're currently in, ending, we are estimating that our sales tax is going to be up 7% over fiscal year 2020, which was actually 11% over 2019. So here's the sales tax estimates for the next, for the end of this year and for next year. And you can see that in 2019, we did a tax rate change. That's when we enacted the 3.5%. So that's why there's a big jump from the previous year to that year. That's the gray line for 16 million. And then in 2020, our sales tax came in at 18 million. And then the estimated 7% for this current fiscal year will have us at 20 million by the end of the year. Due to COVID and the projections that we had received at that time, we actually only budgeted to receive 16.9 million in the current fiscal year in sales tax. So that's almost a $4 million increase over our budget estimates. So next year, we're budgeting an increase of 4% over this current year. So when I was doing my estimates, I contacted our neighbors and asked them what they were doing. You know, are you anticipating an increase, a decrease, what's going on? Pretty much all around, Clarkdale, Camverdy, Sedona, they all budgeted a large increase for this year and a pretty normal 3% to 5% for next year. So they are looking at the conservative side for next year as well. Camverdy told me that their sales tax increase this year was quite extreme. It was like 39% growth from the previous year, and I think a lot of that is growth in their area of sales as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interrupt real quick. Let's make this a dialogue. It's sometimes easier to ask your questions while the slide's in front of you. So council should feel free to interrupt and ask the questions, and we can help explain things as they come up. Of course, we'll take all the Q and A at the end also, but feel free to allow us to take a breath and answer questions.
Yeah, because it makes me less nervous, too.
I didn't quite catch that. The 39% for Camverdy was in their taxable sales or their?
Their sales tax revenues. They're seeing about a 39% growth in revenues for this current fiscal year over last year. So like I said, anticipated taxes versus budgeted taxes. Okay, so in 2020 and 2021, we lowered, at the end of 2020, we lowered our estimates for 2020. We cut back our budget. We made sure that we were really conservative and paying attention to what we were spending money on. So at the end of 2020, we ended up with actually 11.8% over 2019 in revenue for our sales tax. So that money all got carried over into 2021. And partially that's due to the half-cent sales tax increase from 2019 and the fact that we allocate a lot of those to reserves. So by saving that money, it just continues to carry over into the next year. So for '21, we budgeted that it would be down 3% over 2020's numbers. And our, it looks like it's going to actually be 7%, and that's a swing of 18% from 2019 to 2021. So it's increased quite a bit. And you can see the blue line is our, what we actually estimate we're going to receive. And then the orange line in the graph is what our budget was. So we are coming in quite a bit over budget on our revenues for the last three years in a row, 2019, '20, and '21. And we are estimating that, again, 3%, 4% increase for '22. So council's direction when we enacted the half-cent sales tax increase was to put a lot of those revenues into reserves. So in '21, those amounts, that amounts to 2.8 million. And you can see on the slide how that was broken out. About 715,000 to HERF, some in the general fund reserve, which is just cash we allocated. It was set to have it go towards the pension liability, but we've come to you every year and said, well, let's put it towards sidewalks instead. So we put that towards sidewalks, and then we put some money into a capital improvement fund, and then a portion of it goes to general operations. And the same thing is going to happen in '22. We're going to put those things aside for those same items, and that's in the budget. And then we will bring to you again, if you want to put it towards pension liability, which we're planning on bonding for, or if you want to put it towards sidewalks. So we'll bring a list of sidewalks and projects that can be done without those funds at the tentative budget adoption.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Can you explain the transit matching? Because when I read that, I thought it was just being set aside for use as part of a match for a grant. So could?
So for fiscal year 2021, it's zero because we had COVID, and the CARES Act covered almost 100% of that cost. And so we haven't really had to set aside any matching towards that.
But when we set it aside for the matching, we anticipate using it, just not in this fiscal year, but at some point in, I would anticipate, the short-term future. It's not just inevitably set aside, is that, inevitably, determinably set aside, is that correct?
No, we don't, well, not for the transit department. We don't typically just carry over those funds every year.
So then what we're setting aside for transit would be used, it's not, it's not, when I think setting aside, I think we're staying, we're sticking in the bank and we're saving it. We're actually just using that as part of a match for transit in the budget?
Yes.
Okay, I completely misunderstood that, so thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry it wasn't clear.
No, that's all right. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Henry, the good news is for last year, you'll see in here in a little bit, the reserves went up, so the money went into the city council reserves.
And on the pension liability, you have pension liability or sidewalks, but I think we set aside a certain amount of that 0.5% to always go to sidewalks, right?
No, we didn't specify that that would go towards sidewalks. We do budget every year the 100,000 to be spent on sidewalks. It's not part of this half-cent reserve.
And then we, you've come to us every year to ask if we wanted to throw some money toward a pension liability or add that to the sidewalk?
Yeah.
So when you look at the CIP list as an example for this, our recommendation coming up, we're currently recommending the first sidewalk, which Public Works Manager Housman will explain later on, I guess in June probably when we come back. But we took the $100,000 plus rollover money that we didn't spend this year for the fur because we brought it in-house to get it done, and we've rolled all of that over in to take care of the first sidewalk project. And we still have this money on top of that if you want to put it towards making sure we have enough money to finish the first sidewalk project or other sidewalk projects.
So last year, I kind of did a snapshot of what the cash in the bank looked like. And this is this year's cash in the bank. I think last year, our general fund was only at 3 million, and this year it's at 6.5. So you can see that at this point in time, this is how much money is in the bank at all of our different areas. I am still working on getting money into the local bank. We're in the process. We're signing paper to get that done.
Kirsten, take a second and explain what you're doing with the local bank.
So I'm moving over WIFA reserve for our two WIFA loans. It's about 2 million, little, no, it's a little over 3 million. And I'm just going to put it there, and it'll just sit there and be an investment at that bank. And that way, it's covered, it has to be FDIC insured, and it has all these stipulations that you have to do, but they can hold the money here, and it will help that bank, and it'll earn us some interest. So fund balance. So you can see in 2017, our fund balance was about 15 million, and then in '18, and '18 was kind of when we spent the money on all the reserves on finishing up the wastewater treatment plant project. And then we've slowly been building that back up. And at the end of 2020, when we did our audit, our fund balance for the general fund was $8 million. And part of that was our conservative approach to the budget for 2020 and cutting, and so then we had more revenues to carry over to the next year. I'm anticipating that we will end fiscal year '21 with an $11 million fund balance, and we're going to end fiscal year '22 with a $14 million fund balance. And part of that is your direction to reserve more money, and then also that our sales tax revenue is higher. We are bringing in a larger amount of sales tax revenues. So state shared revenues, this is the last four years of all four of the state shared revenues that we get. We get the state shared sales tax, and they're anticipating that this next year it'll be about 1.4 million. We get the urban revenue sharing, and that's going to be 1.6 million, which is down from last year. This is the money that we get that's two years behind. This is the money that will be affected if the governor passes his sales tax cut. And so they are estimating that it is going to be lower next year than it was this year. So, and then the MVLU tax, which is the motor vehicle tax, and it is supposed to come in at 937,000, and then our HERF funds are coming in a little bit lower next year at a little over a million.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, urban revenue sharing, and I may have spaced it, but that's our income sales tax? I'm not, no, that is our?
State income tax share.
So that's the income tax that cities get a portion of by an agreement that was reached many years ago. The reason I want to point that out for the current proposal that our state legislature is considering, in three years, we would lose of that 1.5, we would lose 0.5. So it's a pretty big cut in state shared revenues that we would incur. The good news is, we had a meeting this morning with Representative Blackman that they're still trying to figure out a way to hold rural communities harmless with their tax policy changes. So we're looking forward to that, to hopefully being successful in preventing additional cuts. As you can see, it's already going down by previous decisions that state legislature has made. HERF is going down for many reasons. It's just shrinking money, and I'd hate to see them take a whack out of it where in three years, we don't know exactly what the economy is going to be like when the federal money dries up and all that free money coming to our communities, being spent in our communities, is no longer around. So a little nervous about that, but as you can see, it would be a third of that line would be, would be gone.
So that possible cut in taxes, was that income or was it sales tax?
It's income. They want to do a flat tax.
We provided some suggestions on how to still do the tax cut, because again, as we told Representative Blackman, tax policies, they're purview, and that's what they get paid to do. So there are ways for them to do their flat tax, or however they want to redo it, that can still hold cities and towns harmless, which is our goal, is to make sure that we don't have any additional cuts, because really that just creates a bigger burden on our local community.
So our water revenues, the user fees will increase as of July 1st, as was voted in two years ago, and it will increase every year until 2024. And you can see that our revenues are increasing by a small amount every year since 2019, and we anticipate for 2022 to be at about 8.2 million. And the different colors there are the different revenues that are part of water, and you can see user fees are a large portion in the blue. That's the biggest part of their revenue is user fees. Waste water fees also were increased at the same time. Their first rate increase was in September of 2020, and it continues every July until 2024. And we're anticipating for fiscal year '22 that we will bring in about 4 million. It, too, has increased by a small amount every year, and user fees are the largest revenue that they have, although we have been seeing more capacity fees as people move in and build new projects. So the budget's made up of many different things, and every year I tell you, it's revenues, including anticipated grants, carryovers, and then expenditures, including anticipated grants, and their matching, reserves, indirect costs, and operating transfers in and out. So some of the grants that are budgeted in our current budget, we have a CDBG grant, and we put this in there because we need, we have to budget it to have the authority to spend it. So it's for the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition grant, their CDBG grant. It's in there as an expense and a revenue. If it doesn't happen, we just don't spend the money. So we also have quite a few airport grants, and the airport grants are typically 91.06% federal funds and 4.47% from the Arizona Department of Transportation. And those include a helipad, raising the fence height, a taxi rehab, and some other FAA grant funds. And then we have a small grant in there for trails, historic preservation. We have quite a few GOHS grants, which are the Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grants for PD. We have the money in there from the American Recovery Act, which is the money that we will receive next year and the following year at 1.4 million. We do also have in our grants budget currently the money that we received that helped us save 1.4 million from the CARES Act funding, and we have it in there as a revenue in this year and as an expense for next year in case we decide that we need to allocate it towards something so that we have the budget authority to spend it. The library, there's about 40,000 in grants for different CARES Act grants that Ryan knows of. And then we have Pemont Street Bridge in the HERF budget or the Streets budget. And then for fire, we have a PPE grant, personal protective equipment for 120,000. And then, of course, we always have the ADOT grant, and that's about 1.8 million. So like I said, we always budget everything. We budget all reserves, all carryover, any anticipated grants, any anticipated funding. So when you look at the budget document, it currently, that was in your packet, the whole big thing, it shows that we have revenues of 98.5 million for fiscal year 2022 and expenses of 98.5 million. Seems like a lot of money. Seems a little crazy. But really, the actual estimated revenues are really only 46 million, and the estimated expenditures are 57 million. And that includes all expenditures and all revenues. And everything else that makes up that, those numbers are grant funds, indirect costs, operating transfers, any type of reserve that we budget so that we have the spending authority to be able to do anything that may come up, any grant that may come up, anything that we need, any project that needs to be funded. And so you can see on the left-hand side of the slide, those are the carryover balances that will be coming into fiscal year '22. The general fund at 11.4 million, and then you go down the list of all the different ones. And then you'll also see that at the end of the year, we do also have reserves budgeted, and that's, we can't, we don't spend those reserves, they're just budgeted as an expenditure. And general fund at 446,000, and then a budgeted reserve of 25% at 5.7. And then all the way down the list, the only one that doesn't have a budget reserve is wastewater, even though they started out with a carryover, and that's because we anticipate that if they need to do some big projects over there, we've budgeted all their reserves to be expended. So here we are, fiscal year '21. We are anticipating that revenues will end for all funds at 88.1 million, and total expenditures will be at 76.4 million, which is where we come up with the 11 million in reserve to carry over, and carry over for next year. And then 20, for 2022, we have 98.5 million for both revenues and expenditures to give us our balanced budget. General fund. So the highlighted one is the city council line item, and the reason it's so large is that there's a lot more in reserves in there for next year. And we'll get to that on the next slide. But not, but if you look at the rest of the budgets, nothing really increased that drastically. The only ones that are really large, I would say, would probably, actually, they all, I think, public safety went down because we anticipate doing the bonding. I don't think anything really increased by that much. Was not a large increase, except for reserves. So councils budgeted reserves. So for fiscal year 2021, we budgeted 3.5 million. That's the 16.67% or a 60-day coverage of the previous year's figures, and that was 3.5 million. We always do the capital accumulation fund, and that was set at $1 million a few years ago. And then this last year, you had 62,000 for undesignated, and then we put aside a little bit of that half-cent sales tax that we did at 356,000. For fiscal year 2022, I am anticipating reserving a little over 8, that actually number's wrong, now that I add it up in my head. It's a little over 11 million. We're going to change the anticipated, the 60-day coverage to a 25% instead of a 16.67%. And that was part of your strategic plan, was to increase that reserve to get a higher percentage. So that's going to be 5.7 million for next year. We're keeping the capital accumulation fund at a million. We're adding a capital replacement reserve, which is 2.75% of the previous year's amount. And that's so that if during the year, we have any large capital items that fail or break down that need to be replaced, there's funding for that.
That, can that be used, too, for enterprise accounts?
It can.
We'd have to borrow it from ourselves, kind of thing?
I mean, so the general fund always supports all the other funds, so if any of the enterprise funds needed a transfer, you would, you would transfer it over. But it's mainly to, so that the general fund has a way to replace needed capital items.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I can add, this was brought up years ago, the City of Cottonwood, long before I got here, used to have this kind of fund, and you set money aside ahead of time, and you add the money, and then you buy large items, computers, vehicles, those kinds of things. So it's a way to dedicate money so that you have the full, so you don't have to borrow money later to buy those big prices. And servers cost, I saw him out there somewhere, our IT director, but servers cost a lot of money. So this is one of the items that we'll be able to do there, but also have enough money to replace computers on a regular interval, or vehicles, or those kinds of things. So it's just a start, a way to start saving money to buy equipment as needed instead of having to borrow or put it off because we don't have any money. Back before the last downturn, almost every community had this fund, because this is how you paid for big, big items. Downturn happened, this is the first place you pull from, because that's what it's there for, it's often the first account to go to zero, but this is why you do it. It's, it's not a reserve that just sits in a bank, but it's, it's meant to be reserved for, for big tickets.
Currently in the budget under undesignated, there is $5 million. Typically, we use the undesignated line as capitals, I mean councils. If, if something happens during the year and you want to approve the purchase, it comes from undesignated, and really, it zeros out the budget so that we have our balanced budget. And this year, it'll be at 5 million. And then, of course, back to the general fund, the part of the half-cent sales tax increase at 446,000. We also have in the '22 budget under reserves, $600,000 set aside for the compensation study implementation, and that's just because we don't have the results yet, so we don't know where it'll be budgeted in the budget. And 600,000 should cover any cost of implementing that study. Ron to say something?
No, I'll, not about the compensation study unless there's a question, but that'll come back to council when we, we have that. But I just, I mean, I hope you look at those numbers. So in addition to the 25% set aside policy that'll come back to as a policy, we have another $5 million in reserve. Remember, that's expected by the end of the fiscal year. You know, money, this is, this is the end of the fiscal year, so that doesn't mean we have 5 million there today, but if the revenue targets and expenditures hit mark, then we'll have an additional $5 million in reserves at the end of the year. And like she said, undesignated, so you could spend it during the year if you need to, if something came up. It's just a pretty good place to be in.
You could also carry it over into the next year and use it on one-time expenses, things like platter trucks and fire trucks that are very expensive, that maybe, that don't have a continued expense that's so high, but now you have the funds to do that at the beginning of the next fiscal year.
I really appreciate that. Not only is it a nice place to be, but it's, I mean, we're only in April, and this was something that was discussed, analyzing our percentage and, and seeing if it's where we want to be, and then already moving forward with that analysis is, I really appreciate that, so thank you.
Okay, so personnel request. Okay, so personnel requests. We had over a million dollars in new personnel requests, and we're going to fund 556,000 of those requests. And in that list, you can see there's some that are highlighted blue, kind of towards the bottom, there's some that are half-strike-throughs. We're going to fund a new permit specialist for community development, and it actually is a replacement of a position we cut last year. Things started to pick up as soon as we cut it. And so, things have gotten a little hairy over there, and they really need some help. We're also going to add a maintenance technician to public works and to the Streets Department, they've been asking for several years, and we have the funds, so we're going to fund it this year. We're going to add two police officers. They're going to be unfunded. We're not going to really put money in for those positions, but we're going to add the positions. And if they fill all their positions, which currently they're having trouble filling all their positions, if they do, they'll have space to add two more officers. I wait for you to say something.
I was going to wait till the end. So, a couple of things is, they'll have enough salary savings, we believe, if they were able to fill it to Adam without any harm to the budget. A couple of things is, we get a NACO grant that pays for half of a new officer's salary during their training period, so that reduces their initial cost by half. Currently, when they recruit, they recruit to the max number, right? Three vacancies, they hire three folks, we lose one or two during the process, whether at the academy or when they come back. This would allow them to hire two extra people, knowing that, you know, they'll probably get back down to that original number if we're lucky, the way it's going. And a couple of things that have happened over the last year that, I believe that council talks to me a lot about having more officers on the street in patrol, and I think this will help us get there, while not taking any resources away from either PANT, which I think is a great partner that we work with very well, and we want to make sure that we can staff a PANT. And of course, then there's the School Resource Officer Program. Those are all people off of the beat, you know, off the street, that are doing special assignments. So we believe that we can fit those two positions in there, and hopefully, they can fill them. And if that happens, we'll bring them back next year to fund them. But we did this a couple of years ago with communications, and it worked out just fine. It's just giving them an opportunity to see what they can do to fill some vacancies and get more officers on the street.
So also included are two police aides, and those would be non-sworn members, and they're kind of a lower range. And it's kind of to get people in and maybe see if they like police work, and if they want to move up into being a police officer, they would do, you know, office duties and things, so that the police officers can stay out on patrol and be there and available. And they're a lower salary.
Yeah, if I can add, Mr. Mayor, it's a unique way, I see it as a recruitment tool. We get to see people who aren't quite old enough maybe to carry guns, and get them hooked in, you know, get them in the law enforcement community, get to evaluate them, get them dedicated to the city of Cottonwood. And then when they turn 21 or when they're eligible, we send them off to the academy and bring them back as police officers. I've seen this used in other communities successfully. Very much looking forward to this program being kicked off.
We have a communications supervisor in there, and it's currently budgeted, may or may not happen. That's contingent upon us getting other partners as part of our dispatch center. So it just kind of depends on how things go. But we wanted to make sure that they had the availability if they needed it. We're also adding a GIS tech to the utilities department. We currently have one GIS tech that works mostly with the police department and the 911. And utilities needs a GIS tech to map out the water and sewer lines, so we're going to put that position in the budget for utilities for next year.
If I can then add, Kirsten and Mr. Mayor, back to the communications supervisor, we've been approached by one community organization in the valley. If we can bring that to fruition, their additional fees would cover the costs. If they don't join us, we won't add it. But if they do join our organization, our regional communication center, then we'll add it. And to the GIS technician for utilities, not only mapping out the systems, but our customers, the end numbers, so we can better report and better keep track of, basically, I call it moving our utility system into the next century. We're a little bit dated on our ability to track customers and services.
So we had four reclassification requests, and we're going to do three of them. One is just a title change, so it doesn't cost any money. And the other one is, we currently have a street superintendent who is interim public works director or manager, and we're going to make him permanently the public works manager. And then we're going to upgrade the electrical technician to an electrician, because our current electrician is working all the time. And we need somebody that's just as qualified to work with him so that he doesn't have to work so much overtime. So, capital requests. Every year, I show you this huge dollar value of capital requests, and we very rarely get to fund any of it. This year, we had 23 million in requests for fiscal year 2022. And in the budget currently, we have funded 19.5 million of it. There was a lot of requests that we thought were really great and important, so we made sure to get them in there, some of which are highlighted on the slide. And one of the big ones that I know that Ron wants to mention is the ladder truck. I'm going to beat you to it. So, we're going to buy the ladder truck outright. That's 1.5 million dollars. We are going to use $500,000 of the CIP accumulation fund. It's been accumulating interest, and it's got 500,000 over the 1 million. So we're going to use 500,000 of that, and a million dollars of our revenues, our sales tax revenues that we increased, and just buy a fire truck, a ladder truck. The ladder truck is really old. Doesn't work. And it's been an ask for many, many years, and it's nice to be able to finally fund it. We also did some trail projects, some compressors at the rec center, a backhoe, obviously, the Willard sidewalk, Transit's going to get one van and two buses, and that's all, that's partially funded by ADOT, so that's grant funding. We're going to repair the taxiway, and then we're going to work on the Mingus plant blower and aeration repairs. And that's where the majority of their reserves are being budgeted for next year.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, remember that number, the 19.5 that we budgeted is not general fund? Some of that's utilities, some of that's grants, so that's just accumulation of all sorts, not just sales tax revenue. And then I just want to throw in that we have recommended approval of all of the asks from IT and police for the radio safety issues. So hopefully, we got a plan to completely fix that, at least the best we can, but that was fully funded, very excited to be able to do that.
This is impressive. I don't think I've ever seen us get anywhere near this close to funding our requests for capitals. That's good.
And we're still reserving quite a bit of money. So it's really nice to be able to say yes and not feel like we're strapped.
Well, and these aren't, these have been, most of these have been asked for years. I forget how many miles, David probably can tell us, the backhoe has, if it's even operational anymore. And some of the trucks and vehicles, IT is using hand-me-downs from the police department. The amount of maintenance we're putting into some of these vehicles is extreme. So just to be able to do some of these, there's very little on here, I'd be hard-pressed to find it, that is an ask. These are built-up needs. You know, our pool, we're putting in variable speed pumps so that the pumps don't run all the time, that'll save us money in electric bills over the years. It's just a very nice place to be. I will add that our vehicles, most of our regular vehicles are still on the lease program. I believe IT's and a couple of the department's vehicle requests are going to be leased over the five years, where we pay a small fee for maintenance, and then we own them or we can sell them back at the end of the five years.
We could just name the ladder truck, the Kirken doll. And no disrespect to Chief Sautman, but you know, just he's wanted that thing for so many years, I feel terrible about it, but at least we're finally in a position to get it.
The one year after he's gone.
Right.
That we felt kind of guilty. So I just wanted to highlight some of the things that are in the different budgets, some good points about the different budget. The airport, we are fully charging the airport manager to the airport budget, so you'll be able to, we'll be able to see the actual expenditures for the airport and what it costs. Administration, we decreased costs from personnel because we moved him to the airport. And we're also going to start working on some housing projects. I know he wants to talk about housing projects.
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. I do, if I can take just a minute of council's time on the housing. So as you saw, Kirsten currently has budgeted in our grant area, 1.4 of the replacement CARES money that we received last year, the 1.4. She also added the 1.4 for this year that we're getting from the relief act. And then, of course, next year, you'll see another 1.4. I know housing is a priority for council. We've got a couple of things in the work that I'll be bringing back to council. If it pleases them, we'll have that 1.4 that I think is a good spot to pull from. The first is a half, I think it's a 0.4 FTE, I think is what we're leaning on, for a housing manager, housing director. Sedona would pay the lion's share of it, it would be housed out of Sedona, and then work part-time here in Cottonwood. The city manager for Sedona and I think that we're probably the two leads in the Verde Valley to make this happen. And so we're going to work together, I think it'll save us some money, get the resources we need. And I think the last thing we need to be doing right now is competing for personnel and resources, if we can pull them and get more done. So, that IGA will be coming back to council in hopefully the near future. And then the other thing that we've been working with Sedona on is a down payment assistance program. So there is an organization out of Flagstaff that has been working with Flagstaff and the city of Flagstaff and Coconino County for about, Tricia, are you still here? 15 years, right, I think they said? For about 15 years in administering their down payment assistance program. So we, I'll be bringing back a proposal to city council to assist, using some of that relief money, no, I'm sorry, not the relief money, some of the replacement CARES Act money, to put down towards a down payment assistance program. And I'll bring them in to talk about the program and how it works, and I think, I think it's a great possibility and a great start. Does it solve all our problems? No. Does it help with our inventory problem? No, not yet. But I believe that it's going to take many approaches and many solutions to make any kind of dent on this. And this just seems one way that we can help people, workforce, the target would be workforce housing, or people with jobs in Cottonwood, to find a house in Cottonwood. Karen from Sedona and I have been talking, they don't have much land left. And they know that a lot of their housing solutions are in Cottonwood, and I'm not bad about that. If they move to our community and become a productive members and raise their kids here and participate in our events and pay their taxes, awesome. So, you know, we have some developments coming up, whether it be Mesquite Hills, or the Vineyards, or possibly 89 and Vine, or Spring Creek, and all the infill projects that Planning and Zoning's been working on. There's going to be some opportunities in the not-too-distant future for some workforce housing. So if we can do something to help people get in them and live in the community they work, I'm pretty excited about that. But that'll be coming back. The reason I just wanted to bring it up, to plant a seed, that really, that 1.4 might be a good place to pull from. For the 1.4 new money, the relief money, we're very limited on what we can use it for, we're still waiting for a report from the Treasury Department, better outlining it, on what we can use it for. One of the things that is clearly outlined is using it for utilities, water and wastewater. And if you look through the budget document, you'll see that we're expecting the Mingus plant fix to be 3 to 5 million dollars. We're working on that now. So we could take that money, put it right in, you know, to that plant, help keep rates down. Remember wastewater is only to Cottonwood residents, I believe, that's right, all are just residents. So it's a good way to use that money to benefit, I think, the long-term, keeping wastewater rates down. But we'll bring that back to council once we get the direction from the Treasury Department, because there are clearly other things you can use it for, very few other city functions you can use it for. But we'll bring that back to council also in the future.
Another item in the budget is, in the council's budget, there's currently $200,000 budgeted for a community cleanup. And that would be a pickup of trash, not a taking trash to the transfer station. We also increased the outside agency funding to 150,000 as requested, so that, those proposals have already been put out, and people have already started applying for those. And then, of course, the big one is that we increased our reserves to 25% from 16.67%, and we added another reserve. We budgeted the homeless coalition's pass-through grant for the CDBG, again, because if they get it, if we decide to do it, we have to have the budget authority to be able to do that. Communications is working on becoming a regional dispatching and emergency communication center. The city clerk is getting updated agenda software, which I think she's pretty excited about, maybe? We added $20,000 into the finance budget for a continuing education program. And that's to help our employees go back to college. Human Resources is increasing their training budget to allow for a supervisor-manager training program in both this year, fiscal year 21, and in 22. The court enhancement funds will be used to improve security and meet Supreme Court mandates, and every year, they budget to do security upgrades that are mandated by the courts. Community Development is getting a permit tech, and then they have signs and grants for historic preservation trails, and their online permitting program, which they are working on getting right now. Economic Development has 200,000 of the bed tax to direct to marketing and tourism. This year, they got 100,000, that was what was budgeted, next year, they're getting 200,000. Fire and medical, obviously, they're getting their ladder truck. And they're getting personal protective equipment and additional funds for their volunteer firefighter
Mr. Mayor, I just want to add one clarification to, we already have a regional communication center, we're just looking at expanding it. We've been approached by one large community, two smaller communities, and we'll bring that back to council when it's appropriate. But I see the chief back there, it's regional already, we're just expanding and not becoming.
Coming more, that's what, it's missing one word. So, IT is updating software and backup data for city and communications department, and we funded mobile data computers for both the fire and the police vehicles. The library has a grant opportunity from COVID, and we also increased their book budget so that he could get more digital books, because that seems to be the trend, is really having the digital books on hand for everyone, and it's been a great ask. Maintenance, updating vehicles, which they're thrilled, a new tractor, a new backhoe for streets. And then, additional, we also budgeted for additional maintenance on city buildings, parks and recreation, all the events are in there. TVR, Hawaiian event, walking on Main, the vintage run, and some other smaller events that he plans on doing during the year. And we are still working on cost recovery for the rec center and programs for seniors. We're going to start on Mingus Avenue, the RFP just went out today. Thank you, Jeff, for doing that today, so I can mention it. Transit, they're working on doing a Jerome route and planning a wine line, and that's outside of ADOT funding, so it won't be funded at all by ADOT, it will be all city funding or partners with Clarkdale and Jerome. And then Water's working on their meter exchange program, which they started this year, and they'll continue through next year, and it's going quite smoothly, I think. And then also on their arsenic treatment upgrades, and wastewater will work on an injection well, and then the Mingus plant maintenance and continued work on direct potable reuse.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add one comment to the street maintenance, it's probably been over a year, so it was before COVID, we were having outside barbecue up there, actually, I think, we had an employee leaving at the time, I can't remember exactly. But I was standing around a group of the workers, and I was like, you know, what can I do? What do you need to get more done, to help? And, you know, I expected, you know, raises and money and nicer, newer trucks. They said, no, we need more supplies, we need more money for the supplies to make the streets better, to make the sidewalks better. So we also added a few dollars to their supply, so they could buy more asphalt, buy more seal and those kinds of things. So we even, I think we'll even get more work done on our streets this next year. So we even, I think we'll even get more work done on our streets this next year.
So into employees and benefits. For fiscal year '21, we didn't budget a cost of living, there was no merit program. Our health insurance costs increased for both employee and employer. Arizona state retirement increased. But we did give two payments of 2% to all employees, one in December and one in January, and that was because our revenues the previous year had done so well, and that we had the availability. So for fiscal year '22, we don't have a cost of living budgeted, no merit program, health insurance cost is increasing for both employee and employer. Arizona state retirement is increasing, but we are going to implement the compensation study, and we budgeted that at $600,000. And the little graph on the side just shows you that our general fund expenses for employees and benefits has actually gone down from fiscal year 2019 to this current upcoming budget year. And our number of employees has actually increased. Same thing for the other funds. You can see that the number of employees, the FTEs, and then the costs for the salaries and benefits for all the different funds. And then you can see at the bottom that our average salary and benefits, which benefits usually run about 45 to 50% of the salary, our average salary and benefits about $90,000 in 2019, and it's about $87,000 for 2022. So like I said, Arizona state retirement is going up, goes up pretty much every year, not a large percentage. It's going from 12.22% to 12.41%. We estimate that '21 will end at about $1 million paid in Arizona state retirement payments, and then right at 1.1 million for '22. And ASRS also is, has an unfunded liability, it's just that it's shared with the other organizations, unlike public safety that is solely ours. But at the beginning of fiscal year 2020, it was 11.4 million, according to their actuaries, and it was 13.2 million. So I just wanted to mention too, the public safety, because every year I talk about how those percentages are going up. Fiscal year '21's percentage for fire was to be 27.1 million, and the total employer cost for '22 was supposed to be 33.55%, sorry, million. But we are planning on doing the pension bonding, which will pay it down, and you can see up at the top where it says employer normal cost, that percentage is the percentage we will actually pay once we pay down the unfunded liability. So instead of paying 33, we'll pay 13%, which is closer to what we pay into Arizona state retirement. This is the police program, and theirs was anticipated to go from 58.39% to 68.12%. And again, if you look up at the employer normal cost, it'll be about 11.21% after we pay down the unfunded liability. So our health insurance rates are going up. It was 6% this year. It's not a huge increase, but it's an increase. We still are going to cover the same percentages for employees, the total of the employee cost, and then we are covering 80% of the children cost, 70% of the spouse cost, and 60% of family cost. And with that, you have any questions? In your packet, you had the full entire budget was huge, lots of pages, the whole capital listing and all the personnel requests. And if you have any questions on any of those, obviously, this is not the final budget document. We will be back. I looked on the calendar, we're supposed to be back May 4th for the proposed, I don't think that's happening, since I didn't get it on the agenda. And probably we'll end up just coming back with a tentative in June.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I did, just one. Sure. I meant to ask earlier, Kirsten, on the capital request slide, can you explain the $800,000 for admin?
So that's if we're doing the study for a new city hall. That was the request. It was estimated that a new city hall, doing feasibility, doing space needs, doing an architectural design, would be about $800,000.
What was that then called for the line item on the budget? Because I didn't actually see it.
It's in the capital budget, so it's Fund 30, and it's listed as the city hall.
I didn't have any more questions.
Yeah, that's right. It's a quiet group tonight, which I think is a good sign. I just want to say, I think it's fantastic that we are in the position we're in. I think we're all very, very concerned when, last March a year ago, that the economy would fall apart. Obviously, it hasn't, we've been doing really well. I think it's, why is it we're still being very conservative in our increases, anticipated increases? Because that can only benefit us. And, you know, it's a boom and bust cycle, so I just want to, you know, still be cautious that, one thing for sure in Arizona is boom and bust. And I hope that we continue, I know this council's always been steadfast in this, but that we continue to be conservative and put money away for those times ahead that may not be so fruitful. But really, really pleased to see that we're able to fund so many capital improvement projects, and still put money aside for reserves, which has been a big priority of this council's. And I just think we're in a really good position. So thanks to this council and to our manager, and of course, all of your team for getting us here.
And Mr. Mayor, if, I mean, most of our directors and managers are here tonight, if there was a specific question, like Councilmember Henry had about a department, or, this is really where we also get feedback, if we need to make any changes before we bring back a tentative budget, any concerns that we need to rethink, any requests that we funded that we should unfund, or a request that we didn't fund that you think we should fund, this is your chance as a council to kind of tell us to go back to the drawing board and add or subtract, or, as it pleases.
I don't see anything personally. I think, again, it's tied in, I think, directly with our strategic directives, and I think you were conservative again on the positions that you're adding. I think those are positions that we absolutely need to keep this organization moving forward and benefit our public. So I don't, I don't have anything that I would request to change in.
I don't either, city manager. I had a couple of follow-up questions, but for you, not for the group as a whole, that we can address before we look at the budget. But I think for a tentative budget, this looks really good. And just building on what the mayor said, I know my comment earlier about it only being April was incomplete. What I was really meaning to say was, we just had some discussions on two of the items, for example, that Kirsten was working on, the local bank, that we wanted to increase that presence, and then also, let's look at that percentage of reserves and make sure it's adequate, and I thought that was good work in just a short time period. But I also agree, we're really focusing on our strategic plan as far as what's in this tentative budget moving forward. Apart from perhaps that admin capital request, which was a little bit, you know, just recent, but that was obviously recent council action that's incorporated, so I think it looks good.
The one thing that I will add about positions, since you brought up positions again, is we didn't fund the, your city attorney and I were debating sharing in a position to talk about transition, as he decides when and if he retires, no push here. He decided that that really wasn't the way we wanted to go just yet. So I thought, well, I can go one more year without an assistant too, or a management analyst, or whatever we end up calling it. I think eventually, we're going to need that help in the admin's office, but we can wait another year to see what council decides to do with the city attorney's office as we move forward. And I would suspect you'll be hearing individually from him about his plans, if he has any.
I would take the silence as a thumbs up.
Okay, well, thank you. And we obviously will not have a meeting tomorrow night, because there's nothing else to discuss. And we will bring, we will bring back a tentative, and we will list out any changes that happen between this budget and the tentative budget, so that you know exactly what's in there when we come back for the tentative budget.
All right. Excellent. Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, can I just take a minute and praise my staff? The, the numbers you've seen over the last couple of years have been borne by the work that they have done. We have budgeted, worked together, Kirsten and I, and Helen and the team worked together to create a conservative budget. But as you can see, our reserves have increased, and part of that is frugal spending, spending money only when it's needed, not when it's wanted, and just really aligning behind the city council's directions and strategic plans. So I have a great, great leadership team that understands the budget and being conservative in the budget is a priority for us as an organization, and I can't be more grateful and thankful that we actually, this year was easy because we said yes a lot, but even when we said no, not a lot of whining or complaining, they understood the direction, they understood the need to be fiscally conservative. And I'm just very proud and thankful to have the team that I do for the work that they do. And of course, Kirsten does an amazing job with the number of phone calls she gets and questions she gets from me. And of course, her partner Helen does a great job keeping us in line. And it was just a great time creating this budget this year.
And no COVID to make us go back and redo it at the very last minute.
Right. All right, well, if there's nothing else, then I would move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, mayor made the motion, councilmember Carratt seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.